Welcome, everybody. I'd like to call to order tonight's regular Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, August 26, 2020. It's 5:30 PM here at Merrill High School Auditorium and conducted remotely or virtually. Could you please do a roll call, Tammy?
Ron Liberty.
Here.
Brett Waller.
Here.
Jeremy Ratliff.
Here.
John Smith.
Here.
Maria Volpe.
Here.
Glenda Yenlein. Nub Dashback.
Here.
Kevin Blake.
Here. You could join me and please stand as we're able and face the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, united in its little brother, together.
Good evening and welcome to the Central Area Public Schools Board of Education Meeting. Apps respects the role our elected board members serve in the function of our board meetings. Board members and administrators are committed to working collaboratively to provide our students a safe learning environment and the highest level of achievement. This meeting is a formal event and professional conduct takes the expectation for all in attendance. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sample. Tammy, at this time, we have an opportunity for public comment. I do not have any pink sheets in front of me. Do you have any virtual?
No.
All right. The next item on our agenda would be recognition from the board. The board this evening would like to recognize Travis Wicklocke for his efforts to configure and set up Board of Education meetings to support both the onsite and virtual attendees. His knowledge about the technical side of AV media equipment and his willingness to learn and go above and beyond is appreciated. Thank you, Travis. Can you come on down here and get your certificate? How often we get to see the man behind the scenes? Behind the curtains, but here it is. Thanks again, Travis.
No problem.
At this time, I'm going to turn over the introduction of topics for the administrative reports to Dr. Sample.
Thanks, Kevin. The first four on the list of administrative reports were presented at CTP, and I know that Glenda and Karen are here. If you have any questions, the first one is the district scorecard data, which has been color-coded. Even though we went virtual beginning in March of this last spring, we still color-coded our scorecard data to reflect the progress that we did make. If there's any questions about the district scorecard data, just please let me know. And the next three, first one is the parent satisfaction survey results report, as well as the employee engagement survey results report and the district services survey report. Parent satisfaction gauges are the parents, it's given to all parents. We had a fairly high participation rate with this last parent satisfaction survey. Employee engagement is designed for each building staff member to evaluate their principal, and there's also some superintendent questions on there. And then district services survey report is for all administrators to rate the variety of categories for our central office administrators. Are there any questions at all about any of the three survey results? Okay. Next report comes to us from Glenda Ojenski. It's the professional development update, and Glenda is here if you have any questions regarding her topic summary sheet. Brian Dasher has our monthly budget update, the monthly status report, and the final audited financial report for 2019, 2020. Brian is also available if you have any questions regarding this report. Eddie Then has his human resources update, which includes new hires, COVID-19 work flexibility document, accommodations and exemptions, and the face mask requirement. His report is attached, and Eddie is also present if you have any questions about any parts of that report. And finally, the technology update as provided by Kasia Meschek. It's a lengthy report, and she has attached the topic summary sheet and goes into great detail about each topic on her report. Any questions regarding this report? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Sample. Next on our agenda this evening is committee reports. The first committee is the Finance HR Committee. We had the draft minutes attached from the August 5th committee meeting with John Smith as chair and the rest of the committee available for questions. Does anyone have any questions for the Finance HR Committee this evening? The next committee would be the CTP or Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee. We had the draft minutes attached from the August 12, 2020 committee meeting. Maria Volpe, Chair, and the other members of the committee are available for questions. Do we have any questions for our CTP committee this evening? All right. Our next committee would be the Policy Committee. We did have the draft minutes attached from the August 18, 2020 committee meeting. Ron Liberty, as Chair, is virtually available for questions, as well as other members from our Policy Committee. Do we have any discussion on the attached minutes for the Policy Committee this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on the agenda. There is no unfinished business this evening, so we will get started with Board of Education business, and the first item under that agenda is the 2011 Wisconsin Act 125 Seclusion and Restraint Reporting, the attached topic summary sheet from our very own Karen Baker. This is informational only, but if there's any questions or discussion, Karen is here to assist us. Any board members have any questions on this topic this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on the agenda to the next item is statewide face covering mandate with an attached topic summary sheet from Brian Dasher and a recommended motion from the Finance HR Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? John?
Recommend motion to adopt Governor's mask mandate as part of the opening plan and action plan for the end of the first quarter October period regardless of the legislative statute.
Motion by John, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Did we hear an online second from Jeremy, I believe? So we have a motion by John, a second by Jeremy. Any discussion or questions on the motion or this topic? Will you do? Go ahead, Maria.
Just one quick clarification. From the time that we were at the Finance HR Committee, up until now, I understand that there may have been a change with regard to exemptions and what can be asked or how the exemption process works. So if we could comment on that for the benefit of the board and the public, that would be fantastic. I'm not sure if, who would be doing that, Karen or Brian?
Thank you, Karen.
Yep, you're welcome.
Yes, thank you.
Since we had the first discussion, we have met via telephone with legal counsel. Legal counsel advised us that it is recommended that we ask for some type of documentation from a family. What that documentation may look like for clarification, that is definitely not asking for any type of medical records, is asking for, for example, excuse me, a provider or a therapist to indicate that it's best for a student not to wear a mask. That being said, we do know that there are medical providers who are not willing to do that, so what we're doing is working with each individual family. Our goal here is for students and staff both to be safe. The other piece I would add to that is that we have discussed, and it will take place, that there will be an educational piece as to the fact that some people wear a mask and some do not, with the emphasis that there is to be no shaming of any individual that does not wear a mask.
Awesome. Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Anyone have any additional questions while we have Karen here?
Kevin, can I make one comment?
Yes.
Go ahead.
You said there should be no harassing of students that don't wear a mask. What about students that don't wear a mask harassing kids that do wear a mask?
That, Ron, that would go both ways. The expectation is that all individuals are treated with respect, and that continual education takes place redirection. That being said, if it, if not, if that becomes an interruption of the educational setting, then there will be consequences to inappropriate behaviors.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any additional questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, we'll call the motion to a vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is wages for teachers completing degrees with an attached topic summary sheet from our Director of Human Resources, Eddie Then, with the recommended motion from our Finance HR Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Nubs?
I recommend honoring the teachers their lane change from bachelor's to master's column of the pay structure after earning the master's degree.
Motion by Nubs, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Maria. Any discussion or questions on this topic or motion this evening? Making sure everybody heard the motion by Nubs. He motioned honoring teachers their lane change from the bachelor's to the master's column of the pay structure after earning the master's degree, and that was seconded by Maria. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice vote. The next item on our agenda this evening is pay during potential future closures with an attached topic summary sheet from Eddie Then, a recommended motion from the Finance HR Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Motion by John, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Maria. Do we have any discussion or questions on the motion or topic? John, go ahead. Thank you, Brian. Go ahead, John.
The motion was created in the interest of our public and of this important public question whether or not our contractors have a safe launch.
Um, no, I don't have an update on that. I have not had a chance to get, connect with them yet on that.
I would suggest we put that on the next Finance HR Committee for discussion and Thank you, Brian. Any other discussion on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice vote. You double-check your microphone, Mr. Smith. There we go. Right, the next item on our agenda is the School Health Services Agreement for 2020, 2021 school year, grades 4K through 12, with an attached topic summary sheet from Karen Baker and a recommended motion from our CTP Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Maria?
I'd recommend a motion to approve the Lincoln County Health Department School Health Services Agreement for the 2020-21 school year for grades 4K through 12 in the amount of $104,400.
Motion by Maria, do we have a second?
This is Ron, I'll second.
Second by Ron. Do we have any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice vote. The next item on our agenda this evening is the review of the annual meeting budget presentation and 2020-2021 budget book draft, the attached topic summary sheet from Brian Dasher, and a recommended motion from our Finance HR Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Maria?
I'd recommend a motion to approve the 2020-2021 budget presented for, presented for presentation at the annual meeting in September.
Motion by Maria, do we have a second? Second by Nubs. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda this evening is NEOLA Title IX Regulation Special Updates. This is a first reading, and there's a recommended motion from our Policy Committee. Do we have that motion this evening? Or a motion? Nubs?
I recommend a motion to approve Policy 2266, non-discrimination on the basis of sex in education programs or activities as a first reading.
Motion by Nubs, do we have a second?
This is Ron.
Second by Ron. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is NEOLA's Volume 29, which is number two, Technical Corrections per our Bylaw 0131.1. The Superintendent is authorized to review and make technical corrections to policies that have already been adopted through formal rulemaking procedures. We do have a list of technical corrections that NEOLA is making to their policies. So the Policy Committee has reviewed them, and we would look to be making those technical corrections to all the policies as listed. So that is a transparency or an awareness. Our next item on our agenda this evening is a standing agenda item for the Master Facilities As far as updates go, we'll be continuing to work at our next, we have a placeholder at all our committees to continue on our timelines. Dr. Sample, did you have anything to add? I didn't have anything from Dale this evening.
Uh, no, nothing to add at this point, except that I know that you were able to meet with him, and the upcoming facilities plan, or the Facilities Committee, excuse me, is going to be taking a real hard look at this so that we can make sure we provide detailed information in order for the board to make the future decisions.
Absolutely. All right. Did any board members have any questions or discussion on this informational topic? Otherwise, we will have this as a topic on each of our standing committee meetings coming up here in the beginning of September. Otherwise, we will be moving to consent agenda next, and at this time, then I would ask if anyone wanted anything or would like anything pulled from our consent agenda this evening? If I do not hear or see any hands, I would like a motion, please. Someone willing to make the motion. Maria?
Move to approve consent agenda items A through E, which includes the second reading and approval of Policy 8420.01 Epidemics and Pandemics, Policy 6147 Debt Management, Policy 7440.03 Small Unmanned Aircraft Systems, Bylaw 0162 Forum, Bylaw 0164.2 Special Meetings, Bylaw 0167.3 Public Participation Comment at Board Meetings, Bylaw 0172 Legal Counsel, Policies 1130, 3230, 4230 Conflict of Interest, Policy 1220 Employment of District Administrator, Policy 2260.02 English Language Proficiency, Policy 2460 Programs for Students with Disabilities, Policy 3215, 4215 Use of Tobacco and Nicotine by Staff, Policy 3231, 4231 Outside Activities, Policies 3362.01, 4362.01 Threatening Behavior Towards Staff Members, Policy 5111 Eligibility of Resident, Non-Resident Students, Policy 5512 Use of Tobacco and Nicotine by Students, Policy 5630.01 Use of Seclusion and Physical Restraint with Students, Policy 7230 Gifts, Grants, and Bequests, Policy 7434 Use of Tobacco and Nicotine on School Premises, Policy 8390 Animals on District Property, and Policy 8900 Fraud, Delete Policy 6145 Borrowing, the minutes of the July 15, 2020, July 22, 2020, July 28, 2020, and August 12, 2020 meetings, Claims, Vouchers, and Receipts totaling $2,668,219.17, and the Personnel Report as Presented.
We have a motion by Maria, do we have a second? Second by Nubs. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions this evening? Jeremy, do we have any abstentions tonight?
Yes, I was trying to find the date of the meeting that I was absent for. Would it be August 18?
We have July 22 and July 28 for Jeremy abstaining from.
Abstaining July 22 and 28.
Thank you, Jeremy. Motion carries with those following noted abstentions. Items for future meetings, as has been our practice, we will continue to put our items through our committee unless it's prioritized higher than that based on need. So continue to contact the chairpeople for our corresponding committees. If you have any questions or it needs to go on the next scheduled board meeting, contact Dr. Sample and myself, and we'll work on getting that on the next agenda. We do keep an attached running list of requested items, as well as on the agenda, the Board Decision Financial Impact Summary, which we'll be reviewing here shortly as, to start the new school year. Just a reminder that the radio schedule, the program is tomorrow morning, Thursday, August 27th, starts at approximately 8:15 AM on Blue Jay 730 radio station. Dr. Sample and I will be on the program tomorrow morning. Future meetings, Safety Committee meeting meets Monday, August 31st at 12:30 PM in the boardroom. Facilities Committee meeting will be Wednesday, September 2nd at 3:30 PM in the boardroom, followed by the Finance HR Committee Wednesday, September 2nd, 4:30 PM in the boardroom. Our CTP or Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee meeting is Wednesday, September 9th at 4:30 PM in the boardroom. Maple Grove Governance Board meeting, they meet Monday, September 14th, beginning at 6:00 PM out at Maple Grove School. The District Annual Meeting and Budget Hearing is scheduled for Monday, September 21st at 4:30 PM right here in the Merrill High School Auditorium. Our next regular scheduled board meeting is slated for Wednesday, September 23rd, 2020, at 5:30 PM in the Merrill High School Auditorium and virtual. At this time, we have a contemplated motion to adjourn into executive closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes under Sections 19.85 Part N1, Part N C, Considering Employment, Promotion, Compensation, or Performance Evaluation Data of any public employee over which the governmental body assures suspicion or exercises responsibility, Part N F, Considering Financial, Medical, Social, or Personal Histories or Disciplinary Data of Specific Persons, Preliminary Consideration of Specific Personal Problems, or the Investigation of Charges Against Specific Persons Except Where Part N B Applies, which, if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations. Purpose of the closed session is to discuss waiving liquidated damages of three retiring professional staff members and to discuss the Superintendent's formative evaluation feedback for the evaluation process through the District Administrator Performance Evaluation System, we know as the acronym DAPES. Do we have that motion this evening? Moved by Maria, do we have a second? Second by Nubs, could we have a roll call, please, Tammy?
Ron Liberty.
Yes.
Brett Waller.
Hi.
Jeremy Ratliff.
Hi.
John Smith.
Hi.
Maria Volpe.
Aye.
Nub Dashback.
Hi.
Kevin Blake.
Hi. Thank you, everyone, for attending the first portion of open session. We will now take a brief recess before we reconvene in a location for closed session. We may come back out to open session later. At this time, it is unknown, but there is a possibility to do so for any board business. At this time, it is unknown, but there is a possibility to do so for any board business. But once again, thank you.